All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to this Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty, meeting of the North Newton School Corporation Board of Trustees. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's good to see a, good to see a nice crowd. We've got a lot of special recognition tonight. If you would, please all rise, stand, and say the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have before you the agenda dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Board members, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. And we saw you were there, Tiffany, thank you. Item number two on the agenda is a consent agenda consisting of the regular board minutes of November ninth, two thousand twenty, the special school board meeting minutes of December seventh, two thousand twenty, donations, ECA purchase request, financial claims and reports, personnel reports, which will be read by Mrs. Reyes and the consent vote.
Certified personnel recommended for employment, Joyce Butler, Morocco Elementary School, special education homebound teacher, masters plus thirty hours, as outlined in the club for bargaining agreement effective January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, to the last date of the two thousand twenty-one school year under a temporary contract. Recommended for leave, Danielle Alfon, attorney leave, a sixth grade teacher at Morocco Elementary School from April tenth, two thousand twenty-one, to the last contracted teacher day of the twenty twenty-one school year. Support staff personnel. Pal up the throw from probationary status to permanent status as full-time custodian at Junior Senior High School, effective November twentieth, two thousand twenty. Lana Lynn, from probationary status to permanent status as health coordinator, effective November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. David Lindowski, from probationary to permanent status as part-time custodian support staff at the Junior Senior High School, effective November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Rebecca Dolly Hillis, probationary status to permanent status as, I think it's special education one-on-one.
Yes, one exchange.
Effective December eighth, twenty twenty. There it is, education. And recommended for leave, Michelle Jackson, family medical leave, secretary leave in elementary school from November nineteenth to March third, twenty twenty. November nineteenth, twenty twenty, to March third, twenty twenty-one. And as a matter of record, Patricia McDivitt, Junior Senior High School English teacher, retirement, and so the last contracted day of the twenty twenty-one school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Board members, you have heard the consent agenda, including the personnel report as presented by Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Board members, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
I had some questions. Oh, I had some questions that I sent to Karen Earle. I had a question on the Staples voucher for six thousand five hundred fifty dollars and forty-two cents. It was purchase of equipment for virtual learning at Lincoln. MJ Electric, ten thousand four thirty-seven eighty, Morocco and the high school electrical and boiler repairs. Trucks, five thousand five hundred ninety, purchase of equipment. The discount is going alone, say which school?
So those are the, so those are for interactive TVs and they have to go on track on boards, so in various buildings, but that's the tracks that they have to sit on, they go back and forth.
Okay. HPS LLC, nine thousand fifty-two ninety-four. Morocco, new oven, back for Tilly, you have civil advisement for the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. And then Bo McKinney and Evans, it said for legal services, but for what specifically? I know that they're legal, but what specifically is that one for?
I can kind of help a little bit. That was for John Major, attorney, to help with collective bargaining, so he was available via phone. We've also had a couple of questions, so if I ask a question, he's gonna fill us for that. That's part of it. Is there anything else that comes in?
Nothing I can remember. And the last one was benchmark mechanical, eight thousand nine oh four, for HVAC chiller at Morocco, repairs to water lines at Lincoln, repairs to chiller, hogging cooler at the high school. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Fox. All right, moving on to item number three on the agenda is student spotlight. Do we have our kids here to, all right, awesome. Number one is Bo Hickel, is he here? I think right over here by Lake Village Steiers. Bo was in the second grade at Lake Village Elementary School, was nominated by the Secretary Treasurer, Mrs. Anna Wynn, Health Assistant, Mrs. Alyssa Little, and Principal, Mrs. Kristen Hankins. This is from Mrs. Wynn and Mrs. Little. Bo has been very responsible and recognizing what he needs to do for his health. Bo is a great advocate for himself to monitor himself and keep him safe. He brings his work to complete when he needs to come down to the nurse and is responsible in keeping up his grade. Bo has taken on a lot this year and we cannot be more proud of this brave child. And Mrs. Hankins says Bo is a cheerful little guy. He greets you with a smile each and every day. He is kind and helpful to others and at the same time, taking on such big tasks for a small child. Bo is responsible in getting his classwork completed, but also self-advocating for his needs. He knows his schedule, monitors his health and body, and has eagerly taught himself some excellent math skills to help keep track. He has had to take on so much in his whole life and he does so with such aplomb. That's a good word, isn't it, aplomb? I just want, I had to look this up, so I'm just gonna, that's self-confidence or assurance, especially in a demanding situation. I think that's great, Bo. Bo is smart, kind, brave, and just an all-around great kid. It's for these reasons, reasons and more that we nominate him for North Newton School Corporation Student Spotlight for Lake Village Elementary. Congratulations, Bo.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Next. Do we have Wyatt Wilkins? Okay, Wyatt is in the third grade at Lincoln Elementary School. Where is he?
He's coming this way.
All right, there he is. He is in the third grade at Lincoln Elementary School and was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Sally Smith, and the principal, Ms. Jennifer Neal. Mrs. Smith says, it is my great pleasure to nominate Wyatt Wilkins for the student spotlight. Wyatt embodies many admirable traits, including kindness, respect, and responsibility. He also is a leader in the classroom. He is always aware of the feelings of others and how he can support them. During lessons, Wyatt often thinks outside of the box, coming up with dynamic answers to problems. He is self-motivated, always striving to learn as much as he can. He is truly a joy to have as a student, and I enjoy challenging him daily. And Mrs. Neal says Wyatt is hardworking, responsible, and most importantly, kind. He is developing leadership skills and using them to maintain strong peer friendships. Wyatt can be counted on to have integrity and do his best. He is a fantastic Lincoln Eagle. Congratulations Wyatt, and here is your certificate.
There we go. Now it's perfect. Congratulations Wyatt.
Nice job. Next up is Zoe Williamson. Zoe is in the third grade at Morocco Elementary School, was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Glenda Sanders, and the principal, Ms. Christine Lawva. Mrs. Sanders says Zoe is definitely a generous and giving person. She gives more than what is expected of her. Every day she greets us with a loving smile and always gives emotional support, as well as encouragement, to those that need it. She is very good at reading people and knows when they need a friend. Mrs. Lawva says Zoe is so kind and giving, she is always willing to help anyone who needs it and is there to greet the students, and she is always smiling and happy here at school. Zoe is a joy to watch, and we look forward to her sharing her generosity at Morocco. Great job, Zoe. Here is your certificate of recognition.
Congratulations, Zoe.
Yeah, nice job. Next, we have Aubrey Eller. Is she here? There she is. Okay, Aubrey Eller is in the seventh grade at Junior High School, was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Leanne Brant, and Mrs. Melinda Kimmel. Mrs. Brant, Mrs. Kimmel says that Aubrey comes to school every day with a smile on her face, but she can't see it. And a love of learning. She is dedicated to being the best version of herself and puts a great amount of effort into everything she does. Aubrey's outlook is always very bright, cheerful. What stands out about Aubrey, even to her peers, is her kindness. She is patient and sweet to absolutely everyone she meets. She is supportive of her peers, which makes her a great role model in class. Aubrey is a very positive influence on others and is always one to lend a helping hand to a friend, teacher, or peer. Aubrey is a beautiful girl both inside and out. She is a perfect example of a Spartan. Aubrey absolutely deserves to be the junior high student spotlight for November. And this is what she looks like without a mask on.
There we go.
Thank you, Aubrey. And Sophia Diaz, is she here? Okay, awesome, hi Sophia. Sophia is in the eighth grade at Junior High School, was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Karen Cunningham. This is what Mrs. Cunningham has to say. Sophia is an amazingly pleasant young lady. She always has a smile and is very uplifting and gives out compliments easily. Even when we are virtual, she has the same wonderful attitude. She participates in all discussions and leads a class. She is willing to help others when they do not understand. I look forward to seeing her every day in class. Congratulations, Sophia. And here is your certificate. Thank you very much. And last but not least, Jacob Wilson here. He's a high schooler, he probably thinks this is stupid. I tried real hard. All right, I'm gonna read this about Jacob, just to give him the recognition that he deserves, since this is on YouTube, correct?
It is.
Yeah, all right. Jacob Wilson is in the eleventh grade at the high school, was nominated by the guidance counselor, Ms. Karen Batoras, and the assistant principal, Mr. Jerry Taylor. That's unusual, Mr. Taylor likes someone, that's great. Mrs. Batoras says Jacob has been an absolute rock star this year. I'm so proud of him. He is completing online courses like it is his job, and he has moved from being behind to gaining ahead. After he completes a couple of classes, he will start working on classes for next year. Mr. Taylor says, I would like to also reiterate what Mrs. Batoras said. We brought him back to in-person learning recently, and he has been a tremendous student. He has worked ahead and he'll be able to start some of his senior classes soon. Jacob has been a pleasure to have back at school, and he is a model student for the other students. So, great job, Jacob.
This time, we have a special recognition. We would like to honor Mr. Mike Russell. So, Mr. Russell was elected as the North Newton School Board of Trustees in July of two thousand eight for the Lake Township seat. Mr. Russell served as a board member in two thousand twelve, where he was elected as the board secretary and continued that capacity until January two thousand sixteen, when he was elected as president of the school board, where he serves through December of two thousand twenty. Mr. Russell has been a key leader in many areas of the board member, but especially so in the search and hiring of the capacity of superintendents and building projects over the past several years. He conducted many onsite progress visits and walkthroughs to see how the projects were progressing and if they were on schedule. One of his favorite portions of the board meeting, as you can tell, are the staff and student recognitions, as he loves meeting the students, families, and staff, and acknowledging all of their accomplishments and hard work. He also encourages public attendance at the meetings and takes the time at the beginning and the end of each meeting to thank the public for attending each of the meetings and for caring about North Newton schools, their students, and staff. He's been a staunch supporter of our schools and being proud of the school you graduate from. Mr. Russell is a great representation of that as a nineteen eighty-four graduate of North Newton High School and a strong supporter of all things North Newton and Spartan pride. We are very proud to honor and recognize Mr. Michael Russell as a retiring school board member for the North Newton School Corporation and thank him for his twelve years of dedication and service to the students, staff, schools, and community. He's been a positive influence on the school corporation and will be sorely missed, sorely missed as an editor on the board. Thank you very much. I think he does for.
I'm gonna cry!
Thank you, guys, so much.
I have been taking a picture. So let me take it again. Do you want your wife or?
Thank you, everyone, so much. I really do appreciate it. And thanks to all the board members. It really does, it means a lot, it really does.
Now, I could have went into a lot more detail on what my high school career was.
Pictures out there.
Yeah. I have people willing to give me some info.
All right, thank you. They have for a few more minutes.
We do appreciate your leadership, though. We hope to see you back.
All right. Board member administrator reports, is there anything, any board member administrator would like to bring forward this evening?
Sure, I'll go first. Good evening, I'm gonna stand here so I can see everybody. Um, so it's December, and we're getting agonizingly close to that, to that winter break that is coming up. And as a lot of people do at the end of a year, they start to think about the year that was passed, looking forward to the new year, and what a year this has been. And I think we can all agree, this is year twenty-seven as an educator for me, and I can say it without a doubt, the most challenging of my entire career. It just has been in so many ways. But I will also say that there is so much to be proud of. I really look, you know, listening to the kids today, and now second year, recognizing that Aubrey came from, from Lincoln, and to see her again doing really well at Junior High, um, looking at everyone that has really kind of just dug in and pushed through this whole year, and it's been hard. And we've done a lot of covering for each other, and when you have people that have to be out or quarantined or other things that happen, when there's not a pandemic going on. And so, we have a lot, I think, as a district, to be really proud of, um, and that mostly starts with our people. And they've done a phenomenal job. Every slot throughout the district that you can talk about or name, people have shown up and they have given it their best, and our children are thriving because of it, despite all of the obstacles that we have experienced over this year. And I know we're doing middle-of-year benchmark data, and I'm proud to say at Lincoln, there is a lot to be proud of in terms of the amount of growth that we have seen from our kids, you know, not knowing from January, the last time we did benchmarking, until the fall, and then now that we've been able to be in school for the most part, and I'll knock on this wood, um, we've seen some tremendous growth in a lot of our kids, and that's really what we want and why we're all here. So, thank you to everybody for everything that you guys have done to help to support us in doing what we do for the kids, because it makes a difference. And I'm really looking forward to two thousand twenty just being something in the rearview mirror, and maybe two thousand twenty-one, this pandemic-free and a little bit back to the way things were, so have a good holiday.
Thank you for all you're doing, too.
I'm just gonna piggyback off Mrs. Neal, and we are so grateful to everyone's support, and our kids are truly growing and thriving, um, being able to see their faces and their smiles and get those elbow bumps and still the side hooks, and all of that has just helped them to grow so much this year. As Mrs. Neal was saying, we are in the middle of NWEA testing, and we are seeing growth. So that is huge. Morocco has been doing some fun stuff the last couple of weeks. We've been having the ten days of holiday cheer. Um, today is Santa and red and white day. Tomorrow's Hawaiian Day, as we slide into vacation. Um, so we've been trying to bring joy and kind of forget the outside world when they're here. It's hard, because we do have staff out, students out here and there, but we've been doing it, and we are surviving. So, thank you for all of your support and all of the you do, and thank you to the wonderful teachers and parents, too. Thank you.
Can you hear us, Lawva?
I have a herder. Evening. Just a quick recount of everything that's going on for Junior High School from March thirteenth till now. Um, I think everybody, I'm freezing, so sorry about the cold. Um, everybody just had to grasp the straws last March and just try to get through the best we could. If you would have asked all the teachers a year ago right now, if you think you'd be able to do this thing, I don't know if they would even had, thought it was possible. And we started putting stuff together, we started doing trainings. The first time we had a shutdown, it was a little better as far as the type of learning going on, and there's so much new terminology. The e-learning is kind of like the old days of the snow cancellation, and you did it so you could satisfy the state requirement for a day, and you wanted it to be meaningful. And it was like just a document, do this, submit it. Uh, we're available for help. To the middle of the road there, where it was starting to be a little bit more, um, where there was more contact, a little bit more communication, and then we throw this thing at them about this virtual learning, we gotta make it really meaningful, and all of a sudden, the next thing you know, seven-thirty, class is supposed to start, they're all at home, and we've only got a kid or two in each class, or maybe nine that are gone, they're all sitting there. Eight-fifteen, the bell rings, they go get them out and do a donation, take a leak and come back and start their second class at eight-twenty, and they're still all there. And all of a sudden, you got that visualization, especially for the younger kids in elementary, probably junior high kids, of how important it is to see their teacher, the teacher see and then. And that actually went as well as anything that we've done. So, you can see the progression of how you just adapt to the situation, and that takes support and money and resources from you guys to be able to provide that for the teachers, the training that they have to go through, the willingness, because I guarantee you, you could probably take that girl right there, and she'd know how to log on better than you and I, and she's smart. Um, so the kids are ahead of us, and we're trying to catch them, and everybody just did what was possible. Is it ideal? Heavens, no. We know what ideal it is, and we'll hopefully get back there, but to make it the best that we possibly can, everybody has tried real hard and been understanding, for the most part. So, it, it's going well, and I hope we don't have to use it anymore. Thank you.
I would just say shout out to the principals as well. They've been hitting the ground since March thirteenth as well, trying to put plans together and change plans several times, staff. As Mr. Cuffin alluded to, are involved in synchronous learning. That was a big shift for a lot of our students and adults and teachers and parents, too. We really appreciate the, the, the support from the parents, because I know it's not easy to try and have two or three different kids at different, three different schools, different grade levels, to try and coordinate that, um, but it's been hard for everybody. I think we've really done things to, to help all of our students. Those are some other things that you might be interested in. Um, I'd need to give you a little update on our parent teacher conference percentages. I asked the principals to keep track of percentage of parents that are engaged with parent teacher conferences. This year at Lake Village, uh, we had eighty-seven percent of our parents involved with parent teacher conferences. Last year was ninety-five point five, so it's not too far off. At Lincoln, we had eighty-two percent of our parents engaged with, uh, parent teacher conferences. Last year was seventy-six point eight, so that's actually an increase. Morocco, we had eighty-six percent of their parents engaged, last year was ninety-five. And the junior senior high school had eleven point eight. The point eight's important, because it's almost twelve. Last year was sixteen point eight, so we still have some more work to do. Uh, this Friday is the end of our first semester's finals will be this week at the high school. We start Christmas break next Monday through January fourth, which is the teacher work day. January twentieth, we'll have a professional development day on the e-learning for students. Uh, we've rolled out hotspots to our students. We have a hundred and eighteen hotspots that were distributed, most of them are distributed, although we have a few that have not been so far, so those seem to have worked well. People who don't have internet service at their homes still have struggles trying to get a signal, because there's, there's no tower available. Um, just want to remind you, if you're interested in keeping up with how many cases we have in our district, you can go to our website, www.nnn.k12.in.us. Click under Health Services is the first link there that talks, gives you a, a real-time link to the cases that are updated. We also have a YouTube channel where the school board meetings reside, so this meeting will be there as well. As far as our, our project is moving forward, um, we had Performance Services bring their vendor last week to retrofit one of our classrooms at Lincoln Elementary, is spare kindergarten classroom beside Ms. He, Ms., uh, yes, Ms. Heston and the music room, so very bright, also on a dimmer, so his classroom will have a dimmer and be able to dim the lights for LED. Just another little reminder, too, uh, we have provided a lot of our, all of our staff who are affected by COVID, the opportunity to, um, use Family First Coronavirus Act leave days, which they're entitled to ten days of leave, it doesn't affect their personal or sick day. So, we're hopeful that Congress will renew that, uh, but if they don't, that, that may be hardship for our, our, our staff who don't have days to use, who don't have those, that would be an issue for them. We were notified today that, um, the state had kept back, or Department of Education had kept back, um, some money early on in the CARES Act for, um, I don't know how to explain this, Ms. Akki, I guess they kept back money knowing that they needed to fight with the Department of Education, who wanted to, uh, give funds to public schools instead of, um, non-public, non-public schools, sorry. Yeah, they wanted to give public schools, not non-public. And so, as a result, um, that has been resolved. So, we actually ended up increasing our CARES Act money by ten thousand dollars. So, our CARES Act funding is actually one hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. This money will go for, um, PPE, possibly paying for the routers who pump the buses, and then also paying for those days that are letting staff, um, we're paying staff to be home those extra ten days or some portion of those days. And lastly, I gave you a copy of our school report cards, the districts on the front, and then each, each building, um, alphabetically. Just so you're aware, the I-Learn data is from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, so it's almost three years old. We're asking, yeah, the accountability system is broken because that's, that's three years ago. We're being graded on still the results from the I-Learn tests that those kids have moved on, administrators have moved on. Ministry has been working very hard the past two years to, uh, help teachers and to work together in the buildings. So the only thing that's really different is the high school graduation indicator would have been changed to reflect most recent graduation data. And the CCR, which is, um, CTE completion. But otherwise, all of those are the same because the data is the same, it didn't change three years ago. One day we'll get a great accountability system that actually great schools and most of the students. Until then, we'll have what we have.
Now, did we already get the CARES Act funding, that $143,000 you're talking about, that had have come in?
Yes, well, it's in a, it's sitting for reimbursable, we ask for reimbursement. It's not like they're gonna send you the cash, you're gonna have to spend it and then you're gonna reimburse it.
Right.
Do we have any communications, Mrs. Reyes?
I'm finished, I'm sorry, yes.
We have a couple cards. Thank you for the wind chimes and remembrance of my brothers, very fitting because he had wind chimes on his desk, Martha Blaining and family. The wind chime is beautiful, it makes such a soothing sound like an angel rushed by. Thank you for all the support you have shown during this difficult time, the Vicki Harmon and family.
Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. All right, non-action items, uh, there are none. Action items, uh, 6A is approval of superintendent contract. On December 7th, there was a meeting of the Norton School Corporation Board of Trustees. It was a public meeting to review the superintendent's contract. I'm just gonna go over a couple of the highlights. The contract will run from July 1st, 2020 and end on June 30th, 2023. The base salary is $104,772 plus benefits. There is an incentive bonus of $1,000 if the corporation achieves a B rating and a $2,000 bonus when the corporation achieves an A rating. Copies of this are on the school website. And does anyone have any questions? The chair with entertaining motion.
Have those two approved?
Thank you, Mrs. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Board members, we have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's contract. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand and the motion moves. You get that Tiffany, thank you very much, seven to zero. All right, very good. Moving on, item 6B is affidavit for payment number two. Ms. Zachia.
Thank you, you have a copy of the affidavit. It is, um, we're still paying soft costs. These are out of the bond issuance portion of the, uh, project. And there were two claims that met all legal standards, so I'm asking the board permission to, and to allow the trustee to go ahead and pay these two costs.
Thank you, Ms. Zachia, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6B as presented. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6B, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, Mrs. Fox, that's seven to zero. Item 6C is resolution authorizing the payment of claims and year-end transfers. Ms. Zachia.
Thank you, December 31st is the budget year end. And this resolution just gives authority to go ahead and pay claims. And if we have to make any year-end transfers, allow it to happen. And then in January, we bring the resolutions to the board. At this point, I don't think there's gonna be any transfers between funds. There may be some transfers within a fund for appropriations.
Thank you, Ms. Zachia, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6C as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6C as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, Mrs. Fox, board, uh, the board approval by seven to zero, seven to zero. Item 6D is resolution to approve appropriations, Ms. Zachia.
Thank you, this deals with the teacher appreciation grant. On November 20th, uh, the corporation received $42,428.97. By law, we have 20 business days to pay that out to the teachers. But also, we also, the board has to approve the appropriations, so what you have is a resolution. And then by program, how much is paid out for the salary and benefits for those different programs.
Thank you, Ms. Zachia, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6D as presented. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
I don't want them to.
We'll go with Mrs. Godzey, thank you, Mrs. Godzey. Board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6D as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero, thank you, Mrs. Fox. Uh, item 6E is resolution to transfer funds to alternative education fund, Ms. Zachia.
Thank you, we do this, uh, at the end of the year. The Alternative Education Fund by the state requires it to be a separate fund, but the money is raised on the education fund. So we have to transfer money from education to alternative education to, to fund. Otherwise, um, it will be over expended, we won't have enough receipts to match the expenditures. So this resolution authorizes the transfer of $40,000 from education to alternative education.
Thank you, Ms. Zachia, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6E as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6E as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero, thank you, Mrs. Fox. All right, item 6F is resolution to transfer appropriations, Ms. Zachia.
Thank you, and this resolution is to transfer appropriations within the education fund and operations fund. Hopefully, we won't have many at year end.
Thank you, Ms. Zachia, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6F as presented. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6F as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Item 6G is ratification of school transition to virtual learning, Ms. Zachia. We're gonna give you a break, Dr. Rowe.
Yes, thank you very much. The board approved a resolution of the board trustee's role of superintendent this, um, this summer to give the superintendent, um, the necessary actions to secure the safety and well-being of the community, basically to call when school needed to go transition to virtual for a short period of time. And so the resolution further said that the board will ratify this action at, at in the meeting that would be, um, after that. So at this time, I would ask the board to ratify the action taken on November 9th to transition from in-person to virtual from November 11th through the November 24th. It was necessary, um, because basically we had little staff, our absences, I think this blah-blah took only one day on Friday. We were gonna have two teachers left in the building in Morocco. And that was just one building, we had other instances in the district where it was very difficult. Um, we also transitioned October 20th to 27th for similar reasons. So I just asked the board to approve, um, that decision.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. Board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6G as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6G as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Item 6H, have district student transfer request for second semester, Dr. Rowe.
We have two students who are requesting out of district, uh, acceptance into the district, one from Lincoln and one from Lake Village.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6H as presented. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve the out-of-district student transfer request for the second semester. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Item 6I is approval to dispose of obsolete items, Dr. Rowe.
We have a list of obsolete items by several schools, um, that find those items no longer needed or necessary. I'm asking the board to approve disposal of those items.
Board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 7I as presented, or 6I, I'm sorry, as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6I, is there any discussion?
So I liked your follow-up on the technology portion of that, so I'm, I, I don't wanna assume, but in the future, anything that we're not using, we're going to try to recycle or resell a lot quicker and not, and not stockpile it?
Hopefully.
Okay.
The technology was, you're updated one, you have an updated one that should have a technology removed. We're gonna keep that for next time.
Oh.
So.
It should be in there.
Only because those need to come off of a, um.
Fixed assets.
Fixed asset inventory, it's gonna take a little while for, for you to do that, but it's coming.
Okay.
It's coming, yes. And then we'd also like to put some things on the auction site to allow people the opportunities to look at those things if they're available. And then, um, but yes, I think especially the technology items, if you gotta look at those, I asked the same question, why are there so many? And the question, the answer was, we've just had them forever and throw in XP computers and ones that really don't work anymore.
Any further discussion? Board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6I, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Item 6J is approval of disposal of scrap metal, Dr. Rowe.
We have a request from Mr. Clemmons from the transportation department to, um, dispose of those items for scrap metal.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe, board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6J as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Haas, board members, we have a motion and a second to approve item 6J as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. Item 6K is acceptance of common school loan, Dr. Rowe.
Ms. Zachia and I, uh, had historically worked on our common school loan. So this loan is, loan is written for technology purchases in the district. And historically, it's been used to purchase Chromebooks at the junior senior high school. And then we have, um, pushed newer iPads down to elementary. This, I'm losing track. We have purchased interactive TVs for classrooms instead of overhead projectors like you see on there. Uh, easier to see, they're interactive, so students can touch them, students can.
Step, step.
Chromebooks for teachers as well. Um, we'd like to continue purchasing more of those, so, um, to try and make sure that we've, um, we have moved up to the technology for our students and staff. So that except, I would ask that you'd accept this common school loan in the amount of.
And interest is like 1% this date on this, so it's really.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rowe.
Oh, not to exceed 4% interest, so not to exceed 4%. You said, what, is it 1%?
It's, it's been charged at 1%.
So I was just dreaming, I shouldn't have overlooked it. And can any of this money be used to help the technology person here or those for, this for what?
It's software, yeah. The common school articulates exactly what you can, it's not spent out for, it's mostly technology for students.
And you can only spend what, what's on your application.
Right, yeah, you only get so much per student, so they take like your, I think it's, was it?
$100.
$100, times how many students you have, your ADM, so that you can't get any more than you got there.
And then they look by your assess valuation and, and they rank you by, um, categories.
Good size, I don't know. They're kind of flat screens. A big, elementary principals might know because they have several.
They're maybe, maybe a little larger.
Maybe a little larger than those. Yeah, and they sit on a track on behind, uh, that's where the tracks was for that common school loan. They sit on a track and you can slide them back and forth. So teachers can use part of their whiteboard and do whatever.
Anyone else? Board members, we have a recommendation to approve item 6K as presented. Second, thank you, Mrs. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Sheldon. There be no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion moves seven to zero. All right, public expression, item number seven on the agenda, is there anything that anyone would like to bring before the board this evening?
I would. Um, I just want to commend the administration, I worked as a social worker in this area. Some of the things that I've seen that Norton has been doing is a little different, kind of one-upping some other schools I have contact with, with the hotspots, the teacher availability and stuff during COVID. You know, we've had a lot of kids through a lot of unfortunate circumstances, that kind of stuff really greatly, greatly helps. Kind of to coincide with that, um, we just kind of remind the teachers right now, it, to always remember that they're mandated reporters right now more than ever. Make sure these teachers are watching anything that's out of the ordinary, just the mannerisms, even on virtual, stuff like that. You know, we kind of slow down in our counties, um, with our kind of response to be able to kind of assist these families during this time. To just make sure that we're reminding the staff, um, to look for any little things and definitely don't be afraid to call the hotline, allow us to check. Because with these kids losing that physicality, um, you know, they're sometimes, they're put in some risky situations. But Norton has always been great with that type of response, the schools are great with letting us in, so I just wanted to remind that. I'm more of a personal note, Deb, I'm super proud of you. You're kind of, you know, engaging me and teaching me the morals and the passion for education, community and students and just the importance of everybody's wellbeing. So thank you guys for your time, thank you for your service, Deb.
Thank you.
I would say that, thank you.
Ashley, Ashley Russell. All right, if there is nothing else, um, this will be my final meeting. Uh, my final adjournment of the, of the, uh, of the board and probably my final adjournment of any public meeting. I just wanted to make mention of a few things. I want to thank my family for, uh, giving permission, if you will, to leave early sometimes from family functions to attend school board meetings. Sometimes having to leave vacation when we're camping, to go to graduation or to come to a meeting, uh, for, if we're close enough that I can, that I can make it. I want to thank all the board members, each and every one of you. It's, it is difficult to take time away from your family to devote to the school. And, uh, you guys, you're all great, you're all great. And I just want to thank you for your service and, uh, what you do for our community. Because I feel like everyone needs to give something back to their community. I'd like to thank Deb Miller. Deb, you have always, uh, given me my cheat sheet that I could follow along with and gave me hard copies of everything so I don't have to mess with a stupid computer while I'm running a meeting. And, uh, that is invaluable, I cannot express to you how much I appreciate that.
Oh, man, anytime you need one.
I'd like to thank Pat, uh, the secretary. Pat has been phenomenal, she does a great job. I, I just can't say enough about the things that she does for the teachers and for, um, for the school board in general. Going to meetings and bringing back the information and sharing with us, she does a great job. Paul, like, thank you for always stepping in and filling in for me whenever I wasn't here, even though you didn't want to. I appreciate that. I'd like to thank all the administrators and the employees of the school corporation. You know, this is nothing that anyone can do alone, it's a group effort. And in times like this, it's especially challenging. Dr. Rowe, you're new and newer, I should say, I, I would say you're new right now because you've, you've been in it for a while. And you've certainly been in the superintendent business for a while. But, um, you've done a great job adapting, uh, to this current environment that we're dealing with, and I thank you for that. And like I said, I thank all the administrators, all the employees, and the janitors, the cafeteria workers. Everyone's job is important in this corporation and, and we need to keep that in mind. Karen, I'd like to thank you for keeping the money right, because that is. because that is probably the most important job, or at least one of the most important jobs. Because if you don't have money to operate the school corporation, then you can have some serious problems. And you've always been very good about that. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Zachia is one of the most highly decorated finance directors in the state of Indiana. And I think that we're really lucky to have her on our team. I'd like to thank Mrs. Blaney, Mrs. Haas, and Ms. Maggio. Because these three ladies have, as long as I've been on this board, are always out there. They have better attendance than some of the school board members that we've had. And poor John, he had to run for school board so he could see his wife on the way back. So, you know, I mean, I just can't express enough how grateful I am to you ladies and to everyone who comes to our meetings. I think, like I said, it just goes back to community involvement. I think everyone needs to give something and I wish I could have gave more. You know, I know sometimes I felt like, you know, I was inadequate, didn't do as good of a job as I could have. A lot of pressures with jobs and things like that, you know, it all gets in the way of family and life just gets in the way of doing the best that you can in a position like this. You know, I would like to write a nice speech, but I just wrote a few notes down. But, and lastly, I guess I want to thank everyone who is responsible for this wonderful plaque. I'm going to hang that on the wall in my office and it means a lot to me. I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I think you guys are going to do a great job. And with that, this will be my final adjournment for the December 14th, 2020, North Newton School Corporation Board of Trustees. We are adjourned.